...August 4th to...
Sorry.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, 6:00 PM. And to start, can we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, first off, is there any board member who would like to change the order or add anything to the agenda?
I have nothing.
No?
Okay, good. So, let's review the minutes, the Select Board minutes from July 21st. First?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from July 21st.
Lee is the motion.
I'll second it.
Jeff is the second. Any comments?
I have one only, and that is in the visitors. I have Patrick Corcoran listed twice. So, I think we just take his name off one of the times.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have nothing.
Okay, all members in favor of approving the minutes of July 21st, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's move on to the special Select Board meeting of July 26th. And do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Lee is the motion. Jeff is the second. Any comments?
I have none.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we've accepted those minutes. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to any... Well, first of all, Julie, has there been any correspondence that you need to talk to us about?
Nothing new from the last meeting, nope.
Okay, thanks. Any citizens' comments? And if you can come up to the microphone and just state your name if you're going to talk, that would be appreciated. Any citizens' comments? Okay. Old business. Julie, will you please take us through the old minutes?
Sure. So, just a couple of items. The follow-up to the speed discussion that we had last week. I did reach out, spoke to the town of Andover, caught them before their Select Board meeting. They discussed this at their last Select Board meeting. They have not determined if they're going to do a speed study themselves, but have discussed putting up a 40 mile an hour speed limit sign on their side of the road and are going to keep me updated as to what they actually decide. I think Jeff talked to a Select Board member.
Mm-hmm. Just right there.
Oh! Oh!
Oh!
You're a Select Board member in Andover. Oh, awesome. So, do you have anything to add? That's what was relayed to me.
No, it sounds...
And can you just say, state your name so everyone...
Scott Kendall.
Okay.
Jed LaPreece.
Could he use the microphone?
Yeah.
Scott Kendall and Jed LaPreece.
Thank you.
Scott Kendall and Jed LaPreece.
And do you have it... But do you have something to add to what Julie told us?
Nope, not at this point. I think we were going to talk to you guys a little bit about it and figure out what we need to do and what you guys need to do.
Okay. All right.
It'll require a speed study.
Yeah, and a speed study.
Yeah, and we have done one on our side. And I had forwarded that on to your town clerk...
Yes.
...to share with you guys. I gave her that actually just the other day. So, that gives the data on our side. And one of the places that we tested was actually near the Andover line. It was up around the corner, going towards Andover Pass-Pottash. We tested in two places.
So, can we actually use that data?
I think you probably can. I'll send it to you. All of our speed study stuff was done through regional planning. So, it didn't cost us anything. We used their speed strips. They set them up for us for a two-week period. And then extrapolated all the data from the study. And so, I'll send you what I have. And you may be able to use that because it is relatively close to the town line.
And have you heard complaints about the speed of traffic in Andover?
Not right there.
Nope.
That's only a little section.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's less than a half a mile, I'd say.
It's super tiny.
Yeah.
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 You should have the goats slower.
The Chester goats.
I will send... I sent that information to the town clerk. I can send it to the board as a whole if you want, or do you want to just...
Yeah.
Okay.
Please.
Wonderful. Thanks for coming.
I can get it from the town clerk. Yeah. In follow-up, we had... It had been requested a couple of times to have the complaint... The police department complaint form made digital on our website. Amy was able to figure out how to do that. So, you now no longer need to print out a form. You can submit it online, fill it out online, submit it online, and it comes to me. So, Amy was able to figure out how to do that this week. I did.
Thank you, Amy.
I did. So, just to update everybody on that. And then, the ARPA funding. I had sent you guys an email early last week. Decision was made to allow the county money to come to the municipalities within the counties. So, for Chester, that is around $600,000. So, would put our ARPA total a little over $900,000 that would be coming in. Obviously, we'll be coming in in phases. It's not going to come in at once. My plan will be to be working with the department heads on ideas that we have, things that we know are needs that would fit into this project or into this funding source. And then, to have some community events or community hearings where we're hearing from the public on things that they would like. It's supposed to be a really public process in how we spend the money. I think it would help us to get a lot of ideas and kind of sift through those and figure out what works best for Chester. There is a lot of grant funding, as I've said before, coming into this state. So, any projects we do, we'll be trying to utilize as much grant funding as we can first. We know that we could easily spend the $900,000 in water sewer infrastructure, and that is one of the uses that is definitely allowed. But I'd like to... I'd like to use some for water sewer, but I'd also like to kind of spread it around and hit some different departments and different things so that it helps the entire tax base, not just water sewer users, but...
Well, and it would be good later on to have an understanding of what it can and can't be used for.
Correct. And it's...
Because I don't know that right now.
The guidance has come out. My understanding from the LCT was that it has already been reviewed and redrafted four or five times. So, it's still kind of morphing into what its final results are going to be. So, we're in no hurry. We have until the end of 2024 to spend it.
Okay.
We can sit on it. We don't have the money yet anyway. So, we can sit on it, decide what is the best use for Chester. But again, I want to get as much of the state money in to our coffers before we use our own anyways, so...
As far as the ARPA money, do you know if the court's got their portion before...
Not out of... Not... My understanding is not out of this. So, my guess is that the governor probably agreed, and the legislature agreed, that they will fund it through another source. My understanding is 100% of that county money is coming to municipalities.
Right. I just know, I heard that they've shut down one of the courthouses.
Yeah.
And another one can only operate for like a couple hours a day, simply because of their HVAC issues.
Yeah. I think, I think, just from... I don't know for certain, Jeff, but I would imagine because those two judges were using this as their bargaining chip. I would imagine that the way this got resolved was that they are getting their $12 million to...
Somehow.
To... Yeah, they're getting it somehow.
Yeah. That's my understanding as well.
Yeah. And then, just a quick update on the building. We have... The electrical inspection is supposed to be taking place next Friday, the 13th. We are hoping to get our CFO on Friday. If not a full CFO, at least we would have a conditional to grant us access to the building, is the plan now. We had scheduled the IT, which is really kind of driving how and when we move in. We had scheduled that for the 16th and the 19th. We have decided to push that back since the CFO and the inspections have gotten delayed. We want to have some breathing room. And so, we have pushed that back. So, we will not be officially moving in until the week of August 30th at this point. But it gives us a two-week buffer for number one, in case we don't get a conditional CFO and there's major things to be done. But even if we do get the conditional, it just gives us time to not be rushing into things. So, that's the...
And the opening?
The opening, we're still looking for a grand opening of the building in September. With this date pushing back, we're going to... We'll kind of look at that date again and see if... See if we can meet that or if we need to push that back as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's all I have for old business.
Lee, you guys have any...
I have... I have nothing. Thank you.
Jeff?
No, I think we covered everything.
Lee Dakin?
I just had a question. What does CFO be?
CFO, Certificate of Occupancy.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, let's move on to the next agenda item, the Public Safety Building and Town Garage Financial Update. And Julie, you're on again. If you can help us go through the numbers.
I can. So... As I've discussed it at a couple of other meetings and updated you guys about, the public safety portion of the building, as you know, had a cost overrun of about $120,000. Again, not an expense overrun. Cost overrun being increase in materials costs due to COVID, delays in start of construction due to COVID, which then put us into winter construction and elevated those general conditions expenses that happened. Again, we all know, you know, a larger contingency, we wouldn't have been in this situation, but it is what it is. So, you had approved that we would take $120,000 from the ARPA money that we will be receiving probably next week to kind of make us hold that project does fit within the use of ARPA funds. And we have pulled only the expenses that directly connect to COVID are in that $120,000. So, that portion is taken care of. What we are finding now that we are going out to bid on the highway project, as I kind of updated you guys a little bit about last week, looking at coming in about $140,000 over on that as well. That $140,000 over does include a $70,000 contingency is in that number. Again, rising cost of materials is what's driving that, solely what's driving that. There are a few things that we have looked at and decided would be good to cut. We could potentially add those items later. But even with the items that we've cut, that we're still at that $140,000. So, Kirby and I, and Jeff was there as well, walked the building with Russell Construction earlier this week to look at other areas. I really am feeling like it's $140,000 over. Some of the things that we are cutting to get to get our number down to $140,000 is the sprinkler system, which we would then just have to add next year. The fume hood for the welding bay, safety, I really don't... I'm not comfortable cutting that. I don't think welding fumes are toxic and carcinogenic, and I really don't want the guys breathing any of that in. I think that...
That really wasn't that expensive.
And it's $5,500. You're not talking a huge sum of money. So, I...
It's a safety issue.
It's a safety issue. And I just took... For the protection of those, of those guys over there. The paving, the exterior paving was something that was cut. And that, we would be putting within the paving bond in 2022 anyways. That has been the plan for a while. So, there's no reason to add that back in. The wash and welding bay, Kirby feels we don't need to do the masonry for the wash and welding bay. They are looking at curtains that could solve the issue. And the wash bay would be the very last bay. And so, washing would be an issue. And creating a barrier between washing and welding can be done just by simply switching bays, not having them back to back. So, kind of some refiguring of the layout would, would resolve that to where they don't have to be constructed right now. Probably need, but we will, need to borrow that additional $140,000. My feeling is, I would like to add back in the sprinkler system, and I would like to add back in the fume hood. So, I think it's going to put us probably at a cost overrun of somewhere around $180,000. Again, do it now, do it next year. You know, however you want to do it. Then, there are these additional expenses, again, that are $138,000, that are the items that it was agreed on back at the beginning of this project, during the design phase, that the town would pick up responsibility for those and not have them included in the bond. So, those items have come up, and those, again, are totaling about $138,000. I think we've hit all of them. So, the breakdown of this, I mean, if you add it all up, we're a little under $400,000 for all the projects. On a $4.7 million project, it's under 10%, which, you know, in standard is acceptable. We wouldn't want to be there. But the way I think I'd like to suggest that we deal with the payment of this is not to go out for a $400,000 bond. I don't want to do that. We've covered the $120,000 of the emergency services building through ARPA funding. It's eligible, leave it. The $138,000 that is, we're covering within the budget right now, leave it there. Department heads are watching their expenses. We are paying attention to costs this year. So, right now, you know, at mid-year, at the end of June, we were 40% expended. If we can kind of keep our, our expenses down 10%, it may just be able to be absorbed at the 2021 budget. And we may not end up with a deficit on that. And then, for the highway cost overruns, I'm thinking, let's just do this. You know, we can do it as a current expense line of credit and borrow only what we need and do a one-year loan on that. And then, either pay it in the 2022 budget or go to the voters in 2022 and extend that payment over four years. There are some cost savings coming in next year. We know the gravel pit will be operational. There's going to be savings there. We know that there is additional state aid highway money coming in this year. The state has approved that. That could be $30,000, $40,000, so that could go towards this. We've talked next year about that would be the year to potentially skip a replacement of a truck. So, I think just doing a one, you know, that current expense line of credit lets us borrow only what we need. Then, during the budget cycle, we can look at repayment of if we want to just repay it in the 2022 budget or bring it to the voters for extended repayment. It's smaller chunks, it's manageable chunks. Obviously, we don't want to be here, but COVID really did affect this project. It's not adding things to the building. We've actually taken away from the building on things to keep costs down. It really is COVID-driven.
Well, and even the part of the building that we didn't budget for and include in the bond, I can see if we could take back time and make those decisions. We had no idea that there was going to be a pandemic.
Correct.
So, although that doesn't directly relate, it may have with the decision-making at the time. So, I'm... I feel like people made the best decisions they could at the time, and here we are. So, I think your way of dealing, or your suggestions are really good. I also feel like I'm not 100% sure we should cut everything, especially when it comes to health and sprinkler systems and...
Yeah, sprinklers, we're going to, we're going to be required to put it in eventually. I put in, I changed the water main from four inch to eight inch last year, just looking forward, you know, knowing this was coming. But there's no reason not to put it in now. It's a safety thing. If, if something should happen and, you know, that may stop the building from burning down. You've got to... You know, they just, I don't see any reason to wait.
I don't either. And I want, I'm very happy to hear what you've done, Julie, to try to budget it in. And I think that's real important. And when we talk about the welding fume hood allowance, that has to happen. I mean, the safety features are very, very important. Health and safety.
The other point I was going to make about some of these costs that weren't included in the bond. We were looking down the road at these costs and thinking that we need to have the building constructed, but there's also costs associated with occupying the building. And some of those were, were assumed that we're just going to pick those up as part of the normal town expense, you know? Not a insignificant expense, but something that wasn't necessarily wanting to be included in the bond. So, I think that that was one of the decisions that we made, and, and here we are. So, I, I think that the plan that's been laid out is a good one.
Well, and also the contingency, what percentage was it?
Typically, well, typically, on a construction, you would carry a 10%. If we had our contingencies, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
So, there were some errors, only looking back is, is how I feel about it. And, you know, I think we have a path forward.
Yep.
I as well.
Any other comments on that? Anybody who would like to ask any questions?
I would just like to clarify. If anybody's been down on Pleasant Street today or this afternoon, you see the basin is ripping up pavement.
Thank you. Good point.
And to clarify, so people understand what's happening, they put down, they put down a top coat underneath here, and they didn't put a base coat down.
On one section of the parking lot.
Yeah.
It was an error they made last fall. And so, Russell said, "No, you have to take that up. There has to be a base coat."
So, it didn't fall apart later on, you know, so...
And that's on them.
That is on them. That is not our expense. No, no, no. But good point, Jeff, in case people do see them doing that. It, it does look kind of funny. It does look kind of funny. Yeah.
But I'm sure they're going to have it all ripped up tonight because they were moving pretty fast.
Yeah.
Good.
Good.
Okay. Anything else on that item? Let's move on to the signing of the loans for the dump truck. Julie?
I do.
We all got it in an email?
Yeah. So, you're going to do your motions? Yeah.
Any questions? Or should we just... Should I read the motions that I'd like?
And who's going to sign these? You all are going to sign these.
Okay. So, we're all going to sign it?
Yeah.
So, the first motion that I'd like to entertain is to have a motion to approve the capital equipment note in the amount of $130,000 to be financed over five years at an interest rate of 2.25%.
So moved. Yes, read.
Jeff?
Second.
Okay. Jeff and Lee? All those in favor of us approving the capital equipment note in the amount of $130,000 to be financed over five years at an interest rate of 2.25%? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. We're going to sign it. And Lee, if you want to come in tomorrow?
Yeah, I will.
Ready? So, the next motion I'd like to hear is to have the board approve the resolution for capital equipment loan dated August 4th, 2021 in the amount of $130,000.
So moved.
Second.
Lee and Lee. Lee is the motion. Lee is the second. All those in favor of approving the motion for the resolution of the capital equipment loan dated August 4th, 2021 in the amount of $130,000? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that passes. This is pretty smooth.
There you go.
I don't roll away. Okay. The third motion that I'd like to receive is to approve the tax certificate for the capital equipment loan dated August 4th, 2021 in the amount of $130,000.
So moved.
Lee is the motion?
Second.
Lee is the second. Lee Dakin. Okay. All those in favor to approve the motion for a tax certificate for the capital equipment loan dated August 4th, 2021 in the amount of $130,000? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That passes too.
One of the things that we'll have to do is change the date on this because it says August 9th, 2021.
Oh, I can do that. I'll do that tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay.
That's the date of the document.
Do I just read these?
You can. Or you can just say there are five errors and admissions.
Tell me when you guys are ready.
Done.
Done? Okay. We all had the opportunity to review the errors and admissions from the listers. We have five of those. And I would entertain a motion to approve them.
Can we do them all at once?
You can, unless there's any that you object to. Most of them have to deal with current use.
Bill? Look good today.
Is that a motion?
Oh, I can make a motion if you'd like.
Sure.
Boy, there's... Okay. I move that we accept these error and omission forms that have been corrected and given to us for our approval.
Lee is the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Jeff is the second. All those in favor...
So, can I make a comment?
Oh, yeah, comments. Sorry.
I, I don't know if I'm just misreading this, but it looks like the last two pages in my PDF file are identical.
Let me see.
Yeah, I think we got a copy. I think we got an extra copy, Lee.
Yeah, so maybe there are four.
That's what I found as well.
Four or five? Because I got five pages.
Well, yeah, but the last two...
Yeah. What, let me see the three, the previous three. Heather, if I can... And what's in my packet is the same, Julie. I just want to make sure that this... So...
Same parcel number?
Yeah.
That's the same?
It is the same, but I think she made an error in that this needs to correct the other parcel that it's contiguous to, and it doesn't. So, just sign the four of them, and you'll probably have another one at your next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Or discussion? Okay. So, all those in favor of approving the error, error and emissions four, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
I'll have Val text that for the next, next meeting.
Good catch, Lee. Good catch, Lee.
Done.
Done? Okay, great. So the next item is to discuss new business or next agenda items, and Julie has on for August 18th, the hazard mitigation plan draft for us to review and a cell tower lease.
Those may not be ready, but they might be.
Blessing. Perhaps. Anything else from the rest of the board?
Oh, but I do want a question.
Good.
How, how is the word distributed when the hydrant is going to be flushed? Would you go Crafton Street down to School Street, I think, or Cobly tomorrow? Or not tomorrow, but next week?
Flushing?
Yeah, flushing.
Oh, that's not for another month and a half or so.
Oh, I missed, I thought it was happening next week.
No, we got a thing going on Saturday where I got a valve replacement on Main Street, and I have to shut.
Oh, okay.
A section of the main there, so.
Okay, that's, that, okay, I misread that. You're right. You're right.
And we'll just, how, when we do do that in a month and a half, how are, how are people notified?
It's usually probably on our, on our website or, you know, in the paper.
Yeah, we have in the past put something in the paper.
Oh, that's.
For a couple of weeks prior, yeah.
Yep.
Maybe we can mention it here, too.
Sure.
Anything else?
I just want to remind the board that I, I got a notice for, what was it, August 11th, for the Board of Civil Authority meeting at, what was it, 18, 6:30 or, or 6 o'clock?
I don't have the notice.
I don't have it either. It's one or the other.
It's usually six, but.
I mean, that should be.
Next Wednesday.
Yes.
It should be quick.
August 11th, that's 6:00 PM.
Six.
6:00 PM.
Oh, I didn't get that.
Board of Civil Authority?
Your packet's here, Lee.
Oh, okay, I'll come in tomorrow to sign everything, too.
Yes, purging the checklist, and there was.
One abatement.
One abatement, yes.
Purging the checklist and an abatement.
And I don't recall the abatement number or anything.
No, I just want to remind everybody.
Thank you, Jeff. And it should be quick, but we do need a quorum. So if we can all get, and it's here.
Yep.
Yeah. Good, anything else? There may be a, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait a minute, wait.
Could I have a comment?
Yeah.
You guys discuss the, the fire department.
Can we get a microphone on this?
Scott, sorry. Zoom, this doesn't pick it up if it's.
You guys discuss the fire department and emergency service deal that you guys do for Chester, for Andover. I would like to be involved in that, if we could. Invite us all, that would be awesome. So we have a say in that, too.
So you're on my, Andover is on my list to start those conversations towards the end of September.
Okay.
So I was, so I should go to you?
Or.
You want me to start with you?
You send it right to Jeanette and.
Go to Jeanette?
Yep.
Okay.
And she'll send it to us.
Okay. You know, I think in years gone by, and Bill Lindsey could maybe refresh my memory on this, but we had joint meetings. Do you, do you need to come to the microphone?
We did have.
Sorry, Bill.
Yeah, no, that's fine. We did have a member of the select board come down and participate in the discussions.
Yeah, Red did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and there was talk at some point of actually warning both select board meetings and having a joint meeting.
I mean, typically, how we've done it in the past is, you know, the town manager here would talk to the chair of the select board in Andover. So that was my plan, to kind of go through those numbers and look at everything. And we can certainly still do that, or.
Rather have all of us be invited so we can all have, you know, communicate with you guys.
Okay, right, okay. Let's start that process earlier then.
Do you want to do it the second meeting or first in September?
We probably would do the first meeting in September.
Okay.
Just because that may, it may take a little longer if we've got two full boards talking through something can get quite confusing.
Okay.
There can be some talkers on the board.
So we'll do the first one in September.
Anything else?
Yeah, Lee reminded me that we're going to be doing the sewer main flushing September 9th and 10th. You know, because of our flushing trailer, we've cut back, we've taken two days off of that truck, which is like $2,200 a day. So that's another savings that we've gotten, but just putting it out there, I'll make sure it gets on the town website, that it's a Thursday and Friday, September 9th and 10th, that we will be flushing. And occasionally, what, what happens is when, when it's going up through it, some different houses, because of whatever their plumbing fixtures are or whatever, it may suck the water out of their, their traps. And when they, when it comes back through, sometimes it may splash a little water up in there, in different houses. Most of them it doesn't. But just, just so people are aware that that's when it's going to be, September 9th and 10th.
Okay, well, we appreciate the advance notice.
Yes, indeed.
Anything else? Going, 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 no. All right, then maybe I can have a motion to adjourn from someone.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Leave the motion?
I'll second it.
Jeff's the second. All those in favor of going home? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.